Let's call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in front of our eyes, in the vehicle of liberty and justice for all.
additions, deletions, changes to the proposed agenda for this evening. Roll call, please.
President Schneider.
President.
President Protam Dyke. Councilmember Alec. Councilmember Kalka.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman. Councilmember Glasser. Councilmember Steffler.
Present.
Okay, Communications. So, we've been provided by your manager with the M.D. Grant. So, just for the record, the beginning of this communication, it was addressed to Manager Trent. Please inform you that the Village of Almont has been selected for Fiscal Year 2023 Transportation Economic Development Fund, known as TEDF, Category B grant for $84,652, not to exceed 50% of the total eligible construction cost. So, we're supposed to match. The specifics of this award are detailed in the attached grant summary. These funds are anticipated to be available beginning October 1, 2022. Please be aware that this award is contingent on the legislature appropriating fiscal 2023 funding for this program. Do we have any indication for the legislature when they're going to be considering this?
Probably be sometime this month. They have a very limited work schedule with campaigning going on, but
Oh, yeah.
That should happen this month, I would presume.
And do we have any more work to do in terms of developing the scope of the work? I know we indicated, from what I saw, what we proposed to them, in Allison Drive, et cetera. Do we have any more work to do as far as putting our scope of work forward?
Well, what we submitted in the application is adequate. We don't require any engineering support for that project. It's just a overlay, very similar to what's taking place right now in the Orchard Hills subdivision. That's about halfway complete and will be finished tomorrow if everything goes according to plan.
Good news.
Yeah, yeah, it's great. And budget-wise, Kim, we should be able to come up with an $84,000?
Yeah, I believe we put it in our budget already, so yes.
This grant will help subsidize that project that's budgeted and should put some monies in our hip pocket, planning forward for next year for other roadwork that we can try to accomplish.
Super, thank you. Okay, moving on to the minutes of our September 20, 2022, regular Village Council meeting. Anybody with any comments, corrections, need for discussion? I didn't find any. Looking fine. General Fund. Major Streets. Local Streets. Parks and Recreation Fund. Downtown Development Authority Fund. Sewer Fund. Water Fund. Equipment Fund. Payroll Register Report. DDA Executive Directors Report. Entertained a motion? A motion made by President Protam Dyke, supported by Councilmember Steffler, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I should go back, Communications, because there was more than, it's not set forth on our printed out agenda, but so, Communications. We do have set forth in front of us, I don't know who produced this, the 2022 Almont Heritage Festival Classic Car Show, final numbers. And do we know who prepared this?
Ms. Shaw.
Okay, all right. So
That would be tied in with her Directors' Report, which is part of your consent agenda, Mr. President.
Just operating the red, so there's that. And then there is the resigning. I'm sorry, okay, Mr. Bowman is on our regular agenda item. And not on our regular agenda item is a letter that apparently came in late this afternoon, if I understand correctly. And oh, I'm terribly sorry, I hadn't seen this before. We do have the resignation letter from Lisa Nistat, Manatee Forest. Since we do have this in front of us, you're still of the opinion, Tim, that we should not be addressing this this evening?
Discuss it, or we shouldn't.
I like the idea of it going to the board first and then coming to us, just as a matter of
We can discuss it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we've done in the past.
There's some serious crap going on in here. Nice to get to the bottom of what the hell's going on. I mean, I was reached out to Ms. Shaw to find out, I mean, this is whistleblowing here, I mean, I heard some snippets of the Wednesday fiasco, but it's not my place to bring that up, because I wasn't here. But if we've got somebody that worked for us for six years and is ceasing attorneys and ceasing attorneys and accusing the village of whether we're accusing, I mean, I don't know the truth on this, but this is some this is some serious stuff, so I think administratively, we better figure out how we're going to handle it.
So, yeah, regular procedure is probably a good idea. As Ms. Shaw said at the September 28 DDA Board Meeting, which I attended, as did Wayne, as did Pete, as did Jackie, as did Jimmy Alec. Full house. And Bernie Kalka was also there. Her complaint was after the presentation by the chairman of, I think, a 10-point bullet point presentation, indicating that these were areas where you were either not truthful, or you were not doing your job, or you were doing your job incompetently, and he had data and documents to substantiate those claims. It then proceeded to a vehement arguing back and forth between Ms. Shaw and the chairman that went on for quite some time. It was, aside from embarrassing for that board, but a shame. It didn't indicate at that point, everybody here on the board, did you watch what was just going on? There is a clear demonstration that between these two, that they will not get along, they undoubtedly never get along, because the demonstration of anger and dissatisfaction between the two of them was right on the floor. It didn't indicate to the board, if you start what just happened, you are facing existential crisis, because you have to be able to function. And what you've just seen between these two, I don't think it's possible to function. The board really wasn't going anywhere with it. So, Andy Rosé, the chairperson, continued making his entire presentation, which would be good actually to see, because it's written documentation that he has, and he passed out to each of the board members. And it wasn't getting resolved. And the only emphasis I made, because I was concerned it was up to the board, the chairperson, he says, "I can't do this. I bet, we are not going to function. And so, I'm offering my resignation immediately." A motion was brought by Tracy Poensky to accept the resignation. It was supported by Lisa Nistat. And the vote was taken, and Tracy and Lisa voted in favor of Andy's resignation. And Holly Miller and Paul Randazzo and myself and Kristi Yarborough voted no on Andy's resignation. So, it was a 4-2 vote. That might have been taken by some there, that that was kind of a referendum on who the board really wanted to be in charge of their board. Nothing was really getting resolved, and I've heard there was a lot of discussion back and forth, but the board really wasn't taking any action in terms of what are you going to do as far as non-functioning of the board? And nothing was really happening at that point. I was getting ready to leave, so if this doesn't happen, I'd have a custody trial in the morning. So, I had to leave, but then Holly Miller, after about an hour of silence, finally spoke up and said, "I can't believe the disrespect that's going on here. Why am I doing this?"
It took an hour for someone to say that? It took an hour for a board member to let all that crap go on for an hour?
Well, let's see, Jim Alec did speak up. Wayne did. Wayne's problem is he's a nice guy, so he doesn't attack anybody. Jackie did, to some extent. Bernie Kalka did speak up.
No, no, my question is, you've got a full board going on with a war going on for an hour, back and forth, and nobody on the DDA stood up and said, "This isn't the way we run a meeting, we're a professional board." Not one member did that?
Andy did.
Was that?
Andy did.
Oh, yeah, that was
So, can we act like professionals? Because that was his problem. He was calling out Lisa, because during apparently a DDA meeting, subsequent to the festival, she was saying S-blank show. And that's non-professional. Why are you doing that? You're saying, using vulgarities and telling me to shut up.
Right, right, right here, we're dealing with a bunch of hearsay from both sides. And it sounds like it was, it sounds like it was a crap show on both sides. And if we have a 12-year member of the DDA resigning and a six-year DDA director not saying I was happy with everything she did, but she deserves the respect of more than I don't know. It sounds like it was, it sounds like the whole thing was a crap show.
To be honest, I mean, I've seen, working with them closely, there was some stuff even prior to the Heritage Festival you can see was brewing prior to that, that obviously they were not communicating.
Who has jurisdiction over the DDA as a whole?
I appoint the DDA board members. I have no jurisdiction, whatever, relating to the hiring and firing of the executive director. That is the DDA board.
So, the DDA board, so who has jurisdiction over the DDA board?
We do, in a sense, and I did suggest that there should be an amendment of the Executive Director's Employment Contract to indicate that she should be working in cooperation, coordination with the village. Example, there were some extensive discussions between DPW, Brian Trent, and Ms. Shaw about the DPW doing snow removal. And the belief was, which was brought back to council, that DPW was going to be doing it. So, we spent 90 grand on equipment for doing that, and when it came up for a vote before DDA Board, one, Brian Trent, treat was told, "Don't attend, because it might hurt your chances." Seriously? And then they voted, they ended up voting for Mr. Poensky to do it and not DPW after we spent that money. So, I think that the DDA should be working a little closer and a little more cooperation with Village Council and its staff. That's one bad example.
So, Village Council, Village, so is it a true statement that Village Council and Village Management has no control over the DDA board?
But, I mean
We approve their budgets. We do some things connected with them.
We have to approve their budget every year, for starters. And I think if you think back, Tim, there were, especially when Terry Roach was chairperson, he was good at doing it. He took the position that essentially that it was autonomous, and they didn't have to listen to council. And Ms. Shaw was bringing that up also before this board, "We don't really have to listen to you." And we had a discussion, an open council meeting, saying, "You don't seem to understand. We were elected, nobody elected you."
I've been on here 23 years and I'm confused. So, Mr. Trent, can you put it on your to-do list to get a verification of the flow chart, the flow chart the flow chart of who does what and who has, the authoritative flow chart of the DDA from a village standpoint? From you on down, where does the DDA fit in? What say you have to the DDA and what say does Village Council have to the DDA? Because every time we have a discussion about the DDA, it seems like a gray area of nobody knows who does what and who's and, and it's sad that we're sitting here saying this, but if we're going to make decisions, we get to know who's actually can make the decisions. Because, I don't know, this is I wasn't, well, it's kind of a cluster. One more question. Open Meetings Act. Can council, can the council members be in a quorum at another meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
They're not deliberating on anything that they can vote on. It's an open public meeting, so that anybody can attend.
There was no council business.
Right.
Discussed at the DDA meeting. There was some jocular discussion about that. Look, we have majority of council here. And the reason that that happened is that, subsequent to our last council meeting, there was discussion amongst council members of what had gone on prior to the Heritage Festival, during the Heritage Festival, and especially after the Heritage Festival. And there was a lot of concern and discontent, it appeared. I didn't indicate to them, "If you have concerns about that and the way that the Heritage Festival is run, show up at the DDA meeting and you tell them. I'm not going to lead it, because then it would become about me. Oh, Schneider's going after Shaw, you know, I had issues with her from day one, and I didn't want to be a part of that. But if you had opinions to express, show up at the meeting and tell them." So, Jim certainly did, said, "Gee, Kim, I went to all these business owners, you said that you've been in contact with them, they said they've never heard of you." And they haven't been in contact.
But that's hearsay, because she's, in her letter, says she went to every business and they did talk to her.
Well, it isn't hearsay, because Jim does his job, and he actually went to the business owners.
But Jim's saying it, and she's saying it, and it's hearsay, because
Yeah, right.
until I go to the business owner
Yeah, I mean, I was with Andy the one day when we were doing the coupons, and they did see that in front of me, too. So, yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not saying right or wrong. Alls I'm saying is, I've got a
Right.
I've got a resignation letter here from someone, and I'm not saying that it's right or wrong. I'm just saying, I've got two resignation letters here saying that a five-page piece of information was thrown down in front of them right before a meeting started, and then it almost like a setup. I mean, if I was, if I was a board chairman and I had problems with you, I wouldn't show up at a meeting and start talking in front of everybody. It would be me, you, and Trent together and say, "What the hell's going on?" I mean, I mean, I mean, if it went down, if it went down, if it went down like that, then it's unprofessional and we shouldn't be running our boards like that.
It was tried.
Was that?
That meeting was tried. And it was unsuccessful, whatever. Andy and Kim Shaw, they tried to have a meeting together and it was unsuccessful about the issues.
With them, too?
Yes.
Prior to the DDA Board Meeting?
Prior to it.
Yeah, they were
It was unsuccessful.
It had, prior to that September 28 DDA Board Meeting, oh, I got this link, I got a phone call from Shaw and I said, "No, I'm only hearing one side of the story." And she was asking for advice, what to do, and felt that she was being pushed around, because Andy is assertive and has lots of ideas, and he was presenting them to Ms. Shaw, and she was not accepting any of those suggestions. For example, meeting right after the Heritage Festival, so where memories are freshest, to look at what worked, what didn't work, what improvements can be made, what should be done in the future, what shouldn't be done in the future. And Ms. Shaw was resisting that. She didn't want to do that. There were various other things that happened. And all I was trying to do is that you have to find a way to function, and this doesn't look like it's going to function. And by the time I left the meeting, I wasn't seeing anything where they were going to learn how to function. And so, it, what appeared to be at the time that I left is, somebody has to go in order for it to go forward, and it appears that Ms. Shaw made a choice, but we can follow regular procedures and then come before her resignation letter come before the DDA Board and then come back to us. But, and then, so what, as far as making that presentation, it's true that Mr. Rosé did present in writing to each of the DDA Board members and then verbally discussed each of the points.
I guess my point is, if you came in here and dropped a five-point letter on my chair two minutes before a meeting and then said, "We're going to talk about this on the agenda tonight," we'd be talking for six hours, but we're not talking about it on the agenda tonight, because that's not the way, that's not the way any village board should do business. But that is unacceptable.
Well, but it's all, that's
It's unacceptable.
That's a valid position.
It's not professional. It's not professional. If you have a disagreement with somebody, if you have a disagreement with somebody and you don't like the job they're doing, then present the material to everybody beforehand, so everybody has a legitimate shot to look at it and have it on the agenda.
Well, here was the problem with that. Normally, it is Ms. Shaw that prepares the agenda. She wasn't putting that on the agenda. Two, what I think Mr. Rosé saw, which I certainly saw happening, is that the DDA Board was not going to be able to function. Three
Obviously, it wasn't functioning, because it was a, from what I hear, it was an hour of crap. I heard it was a fiasco.
But the only thing I can say, and maybe you're absolutely right, and I shouldn't be supporting Mr. Rosé's position at all, but what was happening is, they were having, there was a meeting, Ms. Shaw refused. Her and Andy were supposed to sit down, she refused. And then they met, and that was just shortly before the actual DDA Board Meeting, maybe a couple of days or so. And so, it was heading to a point where it became obvious that there was this war going on between the two of them, and the board wasn't going to be able to function. So, that, I think, was the reason that Mr. Rosé acted as he did, because it was suddenly coming to a head at the DDA Board Meeting. And maybe that's not right, maybe you're absolutely right, but I think that's why it happened.
Maybe that's why it happened, but it shouldn't happen that way. It shouldn't.
And those two shouldn't have been in war with one another.
Yeah, yeah. It's a lot of hearsay, and the reason, the reason I bring it up so forcefully, and I'm not saying which side's right or wrong, but one point, if the meeting went down the way I was told it went down, I wasn't aware, you know, I wasn't aware to be there, but if it went down the way it went down, no board meeting, from a professional standpoint, in our government entity, should A, be run like that, or be allowed to be run like that. And board members that sit there and let it happen are as culpable as whoever did it. And I'm not defending these two, but when you've got almost 18 years of DDA experience, resigning resigning, that raises a second red flag of concern.
Well, do you have a basis from Mr. Bowman's letter of resignation that he was resigning because of what we've just been discussing here now?
I'm not talking about Mr. Bowman, I'm talking about him and I'm talking about
But you said, you said 12 years.
Six years. Lisa said she was on for 12 years, didn't she? 18 years. Was Lisa on for 12 years?
I don't think so.
Oh, I thought, I thought her letter said 12 years.
Oh, okay. Figure out a word. And if you want to talk about unprofessional, unfortunately, that would apply to that particular individual. I mean, you don't use vulgarities at an open meeting of a board and telling the chairman, "Shut up."
I'm not saying either side's right, I'm saying it sounds like the whole board was a crap show and nobody on the board reeled it in and brought it back around when you've got seven members on the board.
That's the problem I was having.
Was that?
That's the problem I was having, yeah. That was exactly it. You have to find a way to be functional. Ms. Shaw apparently made a decision, but it will be reviewed and go through the normal process, so. Okay. I think that's it in Communications. Now is the time for public comment for any agenda item, any items on our regular agenda for this evening. Is there any public comment? Any none? Regular agenda item number one, DDA resignation. We've received a letter from Mike Bowman, who had been on the DDA Board for quite some number of years, and submitted his letter of resignation indicating that he had many other commitments and wasn't finding the time, and indicating he doesn't have staff, enough staff at Creekside. And I think Creekside is still going through expansion, so he wasn't finding the time anymore. So, since that it was my appointment of Mr. Bowman, oh, he also served as chairman and did a great job, quite frankly, I think. Good if he was chair permanent at the moment that we've been discussing. And so, I'm going to accept his resignation and request council ratification.
Before I make the ratification, I would like to thank Mr. Bowman for his, I know he did a lot for the village in his time on the DDA, so we appreciate that. And I will make the motion that we ratify President Snyder's acceptance of Mike Bowman's resignation from the DDA as presented. Support.
Thank you. Yeah, motion made by President Protam Dyke. Thank you. Yeah, a motion made by President Tim Dykes, supportive of a council member, Glasser, to ratify the resignation of Mike Bowman as a DDA board member. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resignation is unanimously approved. Regular agenda item number two, emergency ordinance 2022-01. And... And, oh, yes, this is our Halloween emergency ordinance for 2022. This is the ordinance we present every year at Halloween time to try to prevent vandalism or toilet paper, other funny stuff. So, the only change is made from the normal language for this emergency ordinance, the dates. Okay. Any discussion from council or a motion?
When you say the dates, the dates that were in the packet or...
In the ordinance itself, I just changed the year. That's all that is done on that emergency ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt emergency ordinance number 2022-1.
Motion made by Councilmember Conca, supported by Councilmember Glasser, to approve the emergency ordinance relating to Halloween time. Any further discussion?
One question. I think we've asked this before, but I can't remember the answer. Why it's under the age of 17 and not under the age of 18?
So, if you're 17, it's cool?
Yeah.
Technically, well, I know that if, so if law enforcement are dealing with 17-year-olds, they do not have to necessarily have a parent informed.
Plus, plus, at age 17, the prosecutor's office can issue a warrant for you for misdemeanor or felony at age 17.
But if you're not breaking any rules, what are you going to get in trouble for if you're 17?
Who said you're not breaking any rules?
If you're outside and you're 17, you're not breaking an ordinance, so therefore you wouldn't be subject to any penalties. Right? Am I thinking about that correct? I feel like we've got a loophole.
Isn't this a crime, numerous youths congregating in the public streets? So, to jeopardize the peace and tranquility of the village. So, you can have, it's real easy for a prosecutor to bring a disorderly conduct charge. I don't know.
I was going to ask about the time. I mean, the state of Michigan gives a 15-year-old on a driving permit and a 16-year-old with a driver's license till the time of 10:00 PM to be out. That's the state statute on a limited driver's license basis. Why 8:30?
That's when the...
It's dark.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's when the trick-or-treaters are supposed to give trick-or-treaters enough time to get home, get indoors.
30 minutes?
Where are you driving from?
Well, I mean, we would walk. I know my kids walk from downtown all the way out to Elizabeth Lane. They don't, they don't necessarily drive out there. They walk. I mean, they can really stroll slowly.
I think that's like, shoo, shoo, get home, 8:30, it's time.
The spirit of the ordinance is more the night prior.
Yes, I agree.
And I don't think the cops are going to rouse the 15-year-old carrying a bag of candy and throwing them. But if he's not, if he's out doing malicious, he's probably going to get a broken. By having it at 8:30, that ensures that they're not out walking around trashing the park at 9:30.
Right, it's dark at 8:30.
Right, so.
I'm fine with, this is the same one we do every year. I've just always been curious about why it's not 18.
Prosecutor?
18 is legally an adult.
So, it's under...
It'd be a different...
Any minor.
But the law in the state of Michigan, which is a bit odd, is the prosecutor can charge a 17-year-old as an adult. So, and he could easily do a disorderly conduct. I'm not saying that happens, but legally...
By the ordinance, it's supposed to be under 17, that...
It's not disorderly conduct if you're just walking around outside.
"Youth congregating in the public streets in such a manner as to jeopardize the peace and tranquility." So, we're saying that it doesn't exist. I guess you could not pass the ordinance. So, we did have a motion in support, right, and we just haven't voted as yet because now we're... So, is there, is there further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll ask again next year.
One nay here. You said all opposed. I said one nay here.
Okay. And the nay was from who? And the nay was from?
Me.
Now, unanimous vote. So, five to one. Okay. Regular agenda item number three, outside maintenance municipal building. Is this your baby manager, Trent?
Yes, it is. We have a standing maintenance committee that's comprised of township supervisor Bowman, clerk Heffner, our own clerk treasurer Kiesler, and myself. And we meet periodically to review issues of concern regarding maintenance of the municipal property. A few weeks ago, we had the opportunity to meet with representative from American Tree to go over some concerns about landscaping on the property. And they came back a couple of weeks later with a concept design, which is included in your packet. And basically, the crux of the proposal is to get rid of some overgrown yews, make the landscape area more maintenance-free. That would include installing some black diamond edging, fabric, and cobblestone. This work could be completed this month, pending approval by council tonight. Also, as part of their proposal, they included a maintenance proposal where they would come through in the spring, the summer, and the fall for periodic cleaning and weeding of the three areas of the property, the east end, which is the front of the building, as well as the north and the south ends. And in reviewing that proposal, since if we approve this proposal tonight and it's completed this month, we wouldn't need their services until spring for maintenance. And we thought that we really don't need to pull the trigger necessarily on summer maintenance. We could do an evaluation and see if that's really necessary, and maybe we can get by with just spring and fall. And so, for your consideration, we'd like to propose that we approve the proposal from American Tree in the amount of $7,990, as well as the spring cleanup for this fiscal year expense of $475. That brings the total cost to $8,465. This project is shared on a 50-50 basis with the township, so the net cost to the village would be $4,232.50.
I was just going to ask, so how does, so how does supervisor Bowman see this? Is he aligned with...
Yeah, there was unanimous consensus of both sides of the aisle to move forward with this tonight.
And we already have this in our budget, right, for maybe not this exact, but maintenance expenses for...
A generic line item for property maintenance, but it's something, you know, going forward as we, you know, look at not only this type of project, but others that we mentioned even last month as far as, you know, the parking lot analysis, things of that nature, that we might need to increase that budget or have an additional line item that helps capture these types of projects. Do you have any other suggestion on that, Kim, as far as budget?
I have a question about what we're putting in. It says installing, we're taking out some stuff and putting in stones. No plants or anything like that?
That's something that could be done, and we asked them to make a proposal as far as types of plants that could, let's say, give some pop to the front of the building in the springtime, you know, some nice perennials, things of that nature.
That's not included in any of this?
This juncture, no.
I love the stone idea. Want to get rid of it. It's a huge pain in the butt. And then it's hard to plant things with all the stone in there. Necessarily see this as an improvement in how it looks. It's a little hard to tell from the drawing here, I think.
So, the, the squares, are those representing the patio stones where we can put potted plants or, it says, annual pot bases so that they can change out by the season?
If you recall, the two potted plants that are in front by the doors, those are donated every year. And yeah, they would have a planter, a place to, yeah. So, they're more beautiful.
Through this proposal, the factors are not just aesthetics, but also maintenance? And so, stones don't need a whole lot of maintenance.
As an example, on the north side of the building, you know, yews were planted years ago. Well, now, 20 years later, the things are, you know, not manageable, if you will, so.
Damage to the building, they're not taken care of properly, right?
I talked to Roberta. She was saying that there's times where she goes out there and weeds it and all that. And she would like to have something that's non-maintenance, that she doesn't have to worry about it looking all weedy and that kind of thing. So, that's where the idea started.
So, I understand this, like, we're putting two beds of stones?
Yes, it's all, yes, it's going to be nothing all around.
But why are we doing that?
So, they don't...
Reduce building maintenance.
But right now, but what's there right now?
Overgrown.
Overgrown stuff.
No, along the entrance, say, it says, like, create new bed?
There's some, isn't there some shrubs or bushes that have to come out because they're not right? They're too close to the building or something. They got to be pulled out.
Tree, bushy trees that are in front of the planters.
Two gold mop cypress.
Or I want to look if you want. But see what can get pulled.
But it says, create two new beds. That's what I'm asking about, like, two new beds. What is that?
South side, it's currently grass, and they're going to cut out a section of the grass and put in cobblestone that also captures or includes the air conditioning compressor units, et cetera, so that, you know, from having to mow the grass and weed whip, things of that nature, that that's eliminated.
That's the purpose of those beds.
I believe the hostas and everything that are in the front, those are going to remain. It was just those...
Those roundups sprayed with weed killer prior to... It'll like weed killer. I just, I'm just afraid that we're tearing out everything and it's just going to be stones. And I don't know if that's really an aesthetic that we want, yeah, we want to go with if we're going to spend money on something.
Did discuss the desire to have, you know, some recommendations on flowers and shrubs that could, you know, help beautify aesthetically the front of the building.
Beautify also, like, track pollinators, soak up extra rainwater. There's a lot of other benefits to that than just being pretty. Let everybody else talk now.
Are any of the areas going to be cause for change when you do the parking lot analysis? I just don't want to spend $4,000 on building maintenance and then three months later say, "Oh, we got to remove this because the parking lot changes affected."
They have a pretty good, they gave you a pretty good feel that they'd be able to do it before November?
Yes. Yeah, they said if we approve that tonight, that they've got an opening in their schedule for mid-October so that they could get it wrapped up by month end.
Essentially, the entire township and village will be here in November.
Rocks.
Oh, there won't be any weeds.
What if we painted the stones red, turquoise?
Worse, white and blue.
To be more colorful at least.
Right, like, don't we have landscaping requirements for other site plans in our village? Like, would that meet, would this meet that code? Or would we require plantings around buildings?
Answer that question?
I mean, I'm not in favor of us doing, not doing something that we would require others to do, having like foundation plantings or appropriate landscaping.
Hear the cry of...
Because, like, you look at, there's a business in town that doesn't take good care of their landscape. You hear no end to those complaints. So, you know, I get, like, we need to make the outside look good. I don't like asking other people to do stuff we're not willing to do ourselves.
Should comply with our zoning ordinance, just like we would require that of any business. We will double-check and make sure that we're on the same page.
So, is there any further discussion from council about the proposal for landscaping other than stones, weeds, and other items like that? If there aren't, if anybody has a motion, we can proceed.
Make a motion to approve the 4,232-50 for the landscape proposal on Mr. Trent's memo.
Motion by Councilmember Glasser, supported by Councilmember Feldman. Oh, okay. Strike that. Motion by Councilmember Feldman, supported by Councilmember Glasser, to approve the landscape proposal for the municipal complex. Any further discussion? All those in, sir?
Just to be clear, so the way it works with the township, I just don't want there to be a question when the bill comes. We pay the entire bill and then we build the township for the half. So, we see the full total, but we will get reimbursed by the township, so.
As practice and custom, there hasn't been a problem with that?
Correct.
They've always paid their half in the past.
Everything there with the, if the township also approves it, then we will do it.
You could approve the total contingent upon township paying 50% of the cost.
Six, five.
So, I'll reword it. I make a motion to approve the $8,465, which will include the landscaping and the spring cleanup portion contingent upon approval from the township for the 50/50 split.
Satisfied with that language? You still support?
Support.
Councilmember Glaser? Alrighty. Okay, so, we have the motion, we have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
No.
Passes by a five-to-one vote. Okay, that finishes our regular agenda for this evening, and now is the time for public comment regarding any non-agenda items, any public comments this evening. Be in the discussion, closed session, no. Manager Trent, anything you wish to bring to council?
Just wanted to give a little more detail regarding the visit that Bernie Calca and I had to Armada last week for their Phase One Community Heart and Soul, Phase One Training Session that was facilitated by one of the Heart and Soul staff members and Matt Jenkins, who's the designated coach. And what we learned, well, it was an interesting process just for, you know, the Phase One Training part that they had queued up, and there was so much detail that was involved in that training session, they actually weren't able to finish it within the time constraints that they had. So, they're actually having to do a Part Two in a few weeks. But, but we had the chance to sit down with Alexis Halbert and Matt the next day, Bernie and I, and basically got to kind of review where we are at in the process, how we got to the point where we are, being able to observe what's happening with our friends to the southeast and the progress that they've made. And I just wanted to reiterate that the timing of what's happened in Armada, because they actually had council support by resolution last December. But with that support, it took them several months before they were actually able to comprise a core team that could actually then take the ball and move forward with the program. In my optimism, a couple of months ago, when we had the big joint meeting here with 35 to 40 people and had, you know, people that raised their hand and said they wanted to be involved in the process going forward, and then we got, you know, derailed slightly by the township lack of support. But, again, optimistically positive by the response of this council on, let's go it alone if we need to and see what happens. But, you know, life happens to people. And as we gleaned what's transpired in Armada, where it took several months before they actually had at least five to seven people that could be part of the core team to, you know, start going through this Phase One Training Program, here I thought we were going to be in a position where we have all these volunteers before we even had council resolution support. And after we met with Alexis and Matt, Bernie and I agreed that perhaps it would be best if we held off for another month and took advantage of another event that's coming up in our community, and that's the spooky time bash at the end of the month, and use that as another forum to get some survey results from our community, because that's going to be, let's say, maybe the younger crowd, if you will, parents that have kids. And, you know, let's, you know, get some input from that group that's going to be very out, very big out there that day. And, and then come back with a compiled report from what we gained at the Heritage Festival, where we had just under 60 surveys that were turned in, half of them from the village. And today, I had the opportunity to follow up with a couple of people that actually put their name and phone number down and said they might be interested in learning more about Heart and Soul. And so, I've got two ladies that are going to review the material, and based on the conversation that I had with them, I think come next year, they're going to hop on the bandwagon and want to participate in some fashion. So, it's not that we're at a loss for volunteers, it's that this particular point in time, we're at a loss for core team members, because the only person that we can really count on right now that wants to be part of the core team is Bernie Calca. And so, we thought it would be a foolhardy on our part to come to council tonight and say, hey, we're all gung-ho, give us your resolution of support, get the $10,000 seed money from the Orton Group. But we've learned by watching Armada and what's transpired, they had resolution support months ago, but they weren't in a position to actually apply for the grant until they had the core team assembled. And so, in the last two weeks, they've gotten their $10,000 from the Orton Group, and Four County Community Foundation matched that $10,000. So, now they've got $20,000 in the bank to take care of expenses going forward as they implement the program. And so, Bernie and I felt that, you know, we, we need to hold off, let's get some more data, let's find out if there's more people out there as we present this program, that we get those volunteers. Another person that had a strong interest in being part of the core team, their self-issues with their spouse, and so they've kind of had to say, hey, I'm in a hold pattern for right now. And of the other volunteers, they just want to be part of the process. They don't want to be part of the leadership. And so, that's what we're looking for here in the next couple of months, is some leaders that we can count on that are committed for the long haul, the long game, as Mr. Orton would say. And so, I just wanted to give you that update, that we're kind of in a hold pattern for another 30 to 60 days, and we'll come back and give you an update and let you know where we're at. But realistically, we wouldn't be able, even if we got council approval tonight, nothing would probably happen until after the first of the year, anyway. So, I just wanted to give you that update. Secondly, next week, I'll be attending the Michigan Association of Planning Conference. I'll be in here on Monday, but I'll be gone the rest of the week, just to give you a heads up.
This is addressing issues that typically would come before planning commission?
Yes, planning commission, economic development.
Kim, anything to bring to council? Wayne?
Thanks, David, for doing a good job on the M.DOT grant. I just think, you know, we need more of it, and that was a success. And I've heard nothing but good things in the community about it. So, I just wanted to, you know, give you a congratulations on that. Two, we just wanted to check on the status of the handicap signs for the doctors of physical therapy. Just wanted to see where we're at with that in the process.
Still investigating that, working with Row to try to figure out how we can massage two, two parking spaces in the most, what I feel is ideal location. But, you know, there's, there's some work that has to be done in order to accomplish that. And so, we're going to have to get some estimated costs, et cetera, to make that happen.
Can I just ask if you can flesh out a little bit, but the obstacles that impede quicker action as far as setting up the handicap spots?
It has to be completely barrier-free, and there has to be a complete, clear walkway that gets you to, you know, the businesses there, and especially if we're focusing on the physical therapy building, where I feel the best place for the parking spaces should be located. We would need to put in maybe a 15-foot-long sidewalk to be able to get from point A to point B, so that the people can enter the back of the building satisfactorily.
Sorry, Wayne.
The last one was, is obviously, we have the construction going in Orchard Hills for the paving. Obviously, we started Friday in the prep work. A lot of people were really just kind of discombobled, like, can I park, can I not park, what do I do? I know we did post on Saturday, but I feel, again, we were kind of late for doing that. And then, what happened, too, is during the construction, I got a call because a senior citizen got stuck, basically, between cones and wasn't sure what to do or how to get out and things of that nature. So, I just wanted to talk about, maybe we still need to get, like, like, what the thought was, is like the school board, right? I know it's annoying, but it's like, you always know what's going on constantly. You're getting that phone call, it's letting you know what's going on. Who do I need to call if I had an issue? So, like, I went out there, kind of moved the cones, and got her on her way and stuff like that. But it's just, you know, there's still a lot of people out there that just don't know what's going on. And then, like, that particular instance, you know, she just panic mode, because it was like, you know, she just doesn't go out, and the first time she goes out, it's right in a construction site, you know. So, it was just, how do we work on to get that information out sooner, better, clearer?
Like a Nixol alert?
Exactly, something of course that nature. Because, like, I just thought of the schools just because, again, it's something that probably doesn't cost us anything. And again, you can sign up, not sign up for it. But again, for me, it's always that, like, it was like, I knew everything going on at that school, because it was always ringing. So, just a thought, you know, that I wanted to talk about with you guys, if something like that's possible. Especially for the people that don't have Facebook and things of that nature. I just...
The text alert.
Right.
Then you can go look for more information.
Exactly.
Set up a nap, type of thing?
No, you just text a number, and then you sign up for the alerts.
Okay.
Yeah, and I thought, like, you know, that was my thing, too, like, our subdivision's small versus, like, going door-to-door or something like that, or just even saying, future-wise, here's a way to get you information, sign up for this program, and you'll get, you know, a phone call blast of what's going on in Elmo.
I appreciate that comment, Councilmember Glaser, because in getting awarded this grant from M.DOT, which will be probably next spring or early summers project, that very thought went through my mind, we need to be able to notify those homeowners. Part of the problem that we've had, not to, you know, come up with an excuse, but our friends at Priest Paving have stalled this thing three different times from a scheduling standpoint. So, it's like, you know, we, we need to get better confirmation of when we're on their schedule and that they're going to commit to it so that we're not passing out flyers ahead of time to notify people, and then it's a no-show, you know. So, but, yeah, that's something that we definitely need to be cognizant of next year when we do the next round of streets.
I'll hear about that one.
Just a couple of things. I was going to ask Wayne how the paving was going. He already answered that. Have we heard anything back about the grant that we put in for the additional property down at the park?
Yes, thank you for asking. I should have mentioned that during my manager comments. We got our preliminary score mid-September, and I was a little dismayed when I saw what the scoring criteria was and what our score was, that this doesn't seem to be right. And so, I was able to get ahold of the head honcho at the DNR for the grant program, and he reviewed our application over the phone with me, and he acknowledged that there were some deficiencies in their scoring. Part of it was program, part of it was a rookie reviewer. And so, he ended up saying, I'll take care of this, and it ended up giving us, like, an additional 70 points from what the initial score was, which I found out afterward was still not good enough to meet the threshold requirement to be considered for eligibility for a vacant parcel acquisition. And so, in the update that I received last week, and it was kind, it's kind of funny how the people in the DNR work. I'm sure the people in Eagle aren't like this. But, when you're going through the grant process with the DNR, you know, the whole focus is on, tell us about the vacant parcel you want to acquire, what are you going to do with it, and so on and so forth. And show us the boundary of the vacant parcel. Well, as we're doing, you know, the aerial descriptions of, you know, here's where the vacant parcel is, and it's painted in red, and it's right there on M53, and now you can see all the trees, and, and, you know, we even have it labeled, here's the sledding hill, and here's the baseball field, and, you know, here's the playground area, here's the pavilion. That wasn't good enough. They wanted a map that showed the boundaries of the actual community park, along with it being adjoined to the vacant parcel. And that gave us an extra 50 points when we submitted that map. And, and thanks to the DNR gentleman that I spoke with, he recommended a consultant that I reached out to, and that consultant was just top-notch. He's part of the Six Rivers Conservancy Project. He ended up writing a very nice paragraph and submitted three maps for us to add as supplemental information that might get us an extra 20 points. So, right now, we're at 335 points. 300 is the minimum threshold. We might end up with 355. We won't know that until November, when they announce the final scores, and then we find out if we get awarded. But I'm, I'm feeling pretty optimistic that we're going to get that award, and then we'll have to go through the process of actually consummating a sale with the sellers, and then have an appraisal done and all that good stuff, so. But it's, it's, I'm really encouraged that we're going to get a good report in November.
And the last thing I had is just to say thank you, Mr. Trent, for the management report. I know that we've been on you to send out the reports and...
Thank you for being on me.
Yeah, it is very helpful. Pete's absolutely right. All set? Tim?
Yeah, I wasn't even there, and I don't know, maybe I'm overreacting, but the way this went down and what's in here and the way it went down, to me, to me, it's a red flag, it's a red flag. It's, it's very, very, very concerning, the way that, I don't, it's very concerning. It's very concerning the way it went down, the way it went down. It's, and that's all I got to say.
Are any DDA forum meetings recorded?
No.
Conveniently.
As I, well, there's... There, there's... You may recall that I have been pushing for many, many years for the DDA meetings to be televised, recorded, whatever. And there was resistance for many years. I think it was, was it a couple of years ago, Kim, that they said, okay, but then they had to get the assistance of village staff to run that program?
Just get trained on it.
I thought Kim agreed to do that, though.
But then, just issues came up, and it just kept getting delayed and delayed.
Yeah, I, I thought what happened, happened is, it didn't get implemented, is that there was a roadblock in terms of what we had to give them a password or something.
To get access to the server.
Right.
Yeah, but we, we've gotten over that, and I, there was a whole tutorial book that was given.
They just didn't want to follow through?
I, I don't know if, I, I can't say that. I, I just think things happened, and it just fell by the wayside.
Mr. Trent, please look into the authority of where everything lies within the DDA in response to the village and the council, number one. Number two, if she was doing such a crap job and the DDA director reports to the board, instead of going through the whole rigmarole up in an hour of dissertation that they did, why didn't the board just vote to oust? I don't, I don't, I mean, if they're, if they're the authority board and didn't like the job she was doing, and they're the ones that hired and fired, then why did it go down the way it went down? Because, because to tell you the truth, I wasn't there, but from what I was told and what I'm reading, it looked like a flipping hip job. It looked, maybe she was doing a crap job in their eyes, but it looked like, it looked like a setup hit job.
The impression from being there was that the board didn't realize they had the authority to remove the executive director. I think if the board sitting there that night knew that somebody could make a motion to eliminate the executive director, it would have happened.
Well, if they didn't know, and they had such concern, and they thought we had the authority, then it should have been brought to us. There was that big of a concern.
I think it was going to possibly be brought, brought to us.
It should have been brought to us before.
But we didn't know.
It should have been brought to us before.
We don't know who, we didn't know who had the authority besides the DDA. We don't know where our, where we, where we have any authority other than they're approving their budget.
Nobody knows who has the authority, which is my original point. Nobody knows who has the authority, which is my original point.
Find that out.
The understanding, my understanding, and everybody's understanding, was DDA board members are appointed by me, with council ratification, and the only authority that could address the hiring and firing the executive director is the DDA board. And my, I don't know about their understanding, the DDA board, the personalities of the people sitting on that board, I mean, to bring that motion, it takes at least an assertive, if not a aggressive personality to do so, and I don't think that board does that. That's been my experience over the many years.
So I have an excuse to let what happened happen?
Well, I'm not making excuses, I'm just indicating what appeared to have occurred. And going into it and addressing it, yeah, sure, that's, that's fine. Well, I mean, me saying to them, you are facing existential crisis, the DDA board is imploding, basically. And now, now, if in fact, Ms. Shaw is going to be stepping back, and I'm not even gonna try to convince her otherwise, there's going to be some significant changes to the board. Obviously, a new executive director, perhaps a full-time executive director, because it's always complaints, whether it was Nancy Boxey, Ms. Shaw, the 20 hours is not enough to do the job properly, and Ms. Shaw brought that up to me many times, and new board members. So if Lisa's gone, and Mike Boma's gone, there's a couple of openings right there, there's talk, maybe there'll be additional board resignations. There are major changes coming, and their chairperson indicates he has a lot of other issues he'd like to address, that he thinks are problems at the DDA, that can improve the DDA's performance. So potentially, there's major changes coming. Unfortunately, it sounds like this whole scenario is gonna be playing out for a couple of months, but it is what it is. It's unfortunate.
I just hope that whoever sits on the board, and the scenario keeps playing out, tries to keep a sense of professionalism within the board, because if, even if what I'm reading and heard is half true, it was, it was an unprofessional, uncalled-for circus, and I'll leave it at that.
Well, it's always the problem, when you have one side. I have asked Andy if he could possibly be at the meeting tonight, and he could not, in case it was, like, okay, something's like to be thrown out there, accusing you of things, and-
I'm not saying who's right and who's wrong, all I'm saying is, the actions of the way it went down were all wrong.
It's bad, yeah.
Unacceptable.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, believe me, I left, I left there very, very sad, embarrassed somewhat of what had happened, and nobody was taking any action.
I wasn't there, and I'm the only one that has anything to say, so.
Say something regarding who can hire and fire, and they didn't know. DDA bylaw, Section 7, Director, the Board May Employ and Fix the Compensation of an Executive Director. The Executive Director shall serve at the pleasure of the Board.
That's in the DDA bylaws, so it's that board that makes the decision.
Yeah, it's in their bylaws, yeah, yeah.
Questions, does that come to council for approval after they make their selection?
No.
I remember approving, Kim.
Yes.
You remember that, too? So maybe, maybe we were, we were not supposed to do that, but I do remember that we did approve the board hiring.
So the director reports to the Board, and that town is, the village, village is not controlled.
Village is not controlled.
The village controls the one and only board, but that's the authority.
Right, right.
And then, yeah, now, so the board activities. Yeah, I can point board members, but we don't have, and this is what Tim is asking be explored, over the DDA's actual activities, and what their, what actions they're taking or not taking. And now that has potentially become a real problem, which is unfortunate. Yeah, everything Tim said, yeah. Anything else?
No, I've said enough. I'm just sitting here, yeah, I don't, I don't get it, I don't get it, it's, there's, there's something's gushy going on, but I'm done. Thanks for the, thanks for the grant, Dave.
I just wanted to put it out there to the community that there is a school bond proposal survey, that they're seeking input from all residents, not just parents, so if you haven't heard about it, please go seek it out and take the survey.
Thank you for mentioning that.
I didn't understand, meaning to interrupt, I understood, because I got that request, that they were concluding at the last date of being able to participate, was September 30, because I actually wanted to, but I had trials going on, and they couldn't fit me in, and they said, okay, well, you're a no, because we can't get to him before September 30.
Provide input via the survey, though.
Oh, I see, oh, thank you, rather than the-
Than the panel, there's still an opportunity for your survey.
Got it, thank you.
I want to-
Jackie, sorry?
Yes, I want to, I seen in the manager report that they, that there was some talk of what was happening with the old movie theater and the Lane Swayze Clinic, but I was just wondering for exact clarification on that, because I heard that that might not be true, that they were closing this week.
I have not heard for sure that they were closing this week, that was an optimistic timeline that the seller was sharing with me a couple of weeks ago, so I took it at face value, so what you saw in my report was face value stuff.
Right.
In the interim, we did receive an inquiry from a engineering firm this week that was asking for data and details about those properties to do a Phase 1 environmental study. So that in and of itself would probably mean that things are still not ready to be closed this week, but we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Can I just add something, one second?
Sure.
Jackie, please. This is information that seemed to be buried deep within village records, that a particular site, which the theater building in the medical, so-called medical building sit, was a gas station at one point in time, and there, there was a report containing, I saw it quite a long time ago, indicating that there were hazardous materials beneath that pavement. And so, it would seem that that is something that should be shared with whomever's doing the Phase 1, because that would be significant.
Who holds those records?
Village, it was in village records. Of all people, the man I replaced on council, Chris King, was the one that pointed out to me, and I think he showed it to me. I saw it at one, at one point in time. It looked pretty old, but it's there, and it's in village records. But he said, not too many people know about this or see this, but here it is. And that was probably about 10 years ago, or so, that he showed me that? And so, if someone's doing a Phase 1, that would be relevant, I would think.
Do they file Freedom of Information Act request for records? Or, so?
I just-
We know where to look for it, we could provide it, but that's maybe the hard part.
Yeah, if it's, if it's an older vintage print, because the prints that I looked at this week, that are still within our possession, before CCA took over, are just showing the movie theater with a variety of different business enterprises, pharmacy, dance studio, things of that nature, and here's, you know, where the walls will be, and the bathrooms, et cetera. I'm not finding anything that goes back further, you know, to substantiate, what did it look like when it was a movie theater? You know, I'm not sure where those records would be housed here, unless they're in the garage, but-
Used to go to the movies there.
And similar with the medical building, you know, what we have on file here for the medical buildings is just a few pieces of paper, and, and CCA doesn't have anything related to, to that since they took over, so. So we may have to do some more digging, other than what's in our one major office area for record-keeping.
You've been alerted to it.
If that was, Mindy, how, if that was a gas station, how many years back does, would DEQ even have records for something like that, if they had in-ground tanks? I mean, that would be, do they go-
Not if they, not if they were from, like, the 1930s.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, that was a movie theater in 1970-something, '72, right?
My recollections, we're talking 1920s, 1930s?
Yeah.
Is when it was a gas station?
If the town went back, Olden Oak Sandboard Fire Insurance Map sometimes would have gas stations, or tanks, or other things, that's typically what they will pull up in a, to do a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, they look, they look for city records, county records, state records, aerial photographs, sandboard fire insurance maps, title searches, I mean, it's like a thorough look at all records. So, I mean, as, as a village, we have an obligation to provide whatever records we can under FOIA, but I don't know, Steve, if you have any clues for Kim on where to look? I don't know, it doesn't sound like they've found anything so far, but-
I wouldn't know where to look, because I'd never been involved in record-keeping. But all I, all I know is that that report was presented to me, like I said, probably 10 years ago or so.
Look in some other areas, nooks and crannies, and see what we can find.
I'm sorry, Jackie.
No, no, good. And I wanted to ask about the property where the laundromat used to be, do we know if that owner is ever willing to do anything with that property? I know somebody said that he was an elderly man, but I just wondered.
I believe that Ms. Slukum ended up with that property after the divorce from Jim, when, yeah, Jim had run the laundromat in a video place, and then it burned down, and in the divorce, she got the property, and the last I had heard is that she was asking $75,000 for it, but I think offers have been made, and she hasn't bitten.
Offers that have been, she's been approached by every buyer that's been interested in the medical building and the movie theater, so that the footput, footprint could be expanded, and she has kept jacking the price up as each new buyer comes forward, so. And so, nobody's making, she's, she's basically asking too high compared to what a buyer feels it's worth, so.
Okay, okay, I just wondered about that.
I think the fire was, like, 20 years ago, or so, and she's been sitting on it ever since. And I've seen her out there weed-killing, good stuff roundup, or whatever she was spraying on there. I actually have a roundup case at this, at this point in time, it's really interesting.
I'm all set.
With $10 billion trust fund. So, as has been discussed this evening, the DDA situation is very unfortunate, it's very sad, it was obviously not a very, very productive meeting, although I understand that after I left, that discussion was a little more amicable than when I was there, in terms, I mean, part of the presentation was, so Andy makes his presentation from all the things he had to say, and I think basically, Ms. Shaw said, well, that's one-sided, and I'm not even gonna glorify that with a response, something to that effect, and then I believe she was asked from somebody by the audience, well, you said it's one-sided, why aren't you presenting your side? And I guess the discussion got a little more in-depth, and a little more amicable, a little more thorough response from her, that's what I was told. So, yeah, there's nothing good about what happened, and the way, and the way it was handled, it was unfortunate, and the issues that Tim has raised are valid and legitimate, and I'm sure all of that would be taken into consideration. I'm hoping that this is not a war that's gonna be dragged out for the next several months, because it's going to make the DDA non-functional, and I don't know who is gonna be doing, like, you know, the Halloween ceremonial, because normally, that is the executive director, and Kim Shaw did that.
The holiday.
Yeah, right, all of that, so it's like, hmm, boy, yeah, it's something, and so, we, I don't know, I mean, the thought occurred, it just occurred, that do we need to potentially appoint an executive director on an emergency basis, just somebody temporarily while a director's been sought out?
Yeah, yeah, the bylaws do, I read the bylaws, the bylaws do say that the board, the director of the board can appoint a temporary person, it cannot be a board member.
And, and there's, there's something applicable in the village charter as well, addressing that, and so I just wanted to throw that out there in terms of how we try to resolve the problem. I mean, I, I wanted the DDA meetings televised, recorded, however you want to describe it, because I think it does important work, and the community, there was no visibility as to what it was actually doing, and it was doing a lot of important things, and, and the community in general had no particular appreciation for the DDA and what it does, because it doesn't have any visibility. So that's why I've been trying to encourage it all this time, and why that fell apart is, I'm not really sure, but that's unfortunate, and it should be. Why not? It's addressing important issues within the village, and I think DDA needs to be working more closely with the village as well. We're adjourned, folks.